Uh meeting open and recorded a couple of times.
Yeah, it took me about three days to get whatever I had have gone.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I was just like in a lot of like.
Yeah, a lot of.
More than normal. I knew you were.
It's. Joey, I think that we'll have to. I think we have to pretty much take all of this out and just say on the word discuss this. Did we was this the one wait which this one was the twenty first? Is this where this had already happened? You didn't write any of that? Okay. Was I even in that meeting? I don't think I was in the meeting. So is this before or after?
This is.
Executive.
This is prior to her.
So then I think we keep this just as that. And I think that because I don't think we want to do that. I think we have to keep it like super minimal.
Okay, it's it's exactly the session.
Okay, yeah, but yes, but at some point it goes, yeah. That's what I was told years ago, at least. Um, are you going to just let me just resubmit another time then? For that one, yeah, that one. Real table. All right, I'll take your copies back then, sir. Thank you. If you can just give um the executive session minutes back.
Twenty one.
It's it's um it'll be clear when you get to it. It's. Yellow.
Of everything that I saw in yellow.
Is it in here not? No, it's not. No, no, we don't hear this. You're pointing to the um your name was on. Uh, Lee Alice looked at.
Okay.
The appointing committee one Mary just pointed out. Yeah. Put your name on there. You were there. Yeah. But she said you have nothing to do with. I don't actually sign it. Okay. So. Okay. Just put all that stuff back and I'll take care of that and get it to the appointing committee. All right. Thank you very much, Joan. Okay.
So we all.
Thanks, Mary.
We all.
So the only minutes we're looking at are the um the seventh. Very um and make them oh, these are already you just need me to sign it. So we don't need a motion. And say that. Do we need to motion the August seventh or they're already done? August seventh should be there. Okay, I just wasn't sure because they both signed it. Um, most uh motion to approve meeting minutes August seventh twenty twenty three is written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I. Audience participation? Okay, you got three minutes. Come on down. I'll fix that thing.
Thank you for your time this evening. I think my president's last Monday night and Mary's article in Country Journal um sparked some response. Um, and one of the responses I received was you think that's bad? You ought to look at the um post office. And I did and I asked around some pictures while we're dealing with with the post office. Take a look at each one of those and pass it along. Um, I think we got some serious problems in terms of maintenance of town property. Um, two basic uh properties in town are not getting maintained on a yearly basis. Um, let alone several years. Um, I think these being some committee established or some person assigned the responsibility to oversee the maintenance of the properties in town. Um, with TJ retiring from the Cemetery Commission, um, there's a whole other situation plenty a lot of time in that for the next few years as well as the other properties of town. I was wondering why uh things have been allowed to get so um poor. Um, one of the comments I received was that Main Street is starting to be blocked by the slum. Um, and I think that's sad to hear somebody say that has lived in town a long time.
I would strongly disagree with that, but um Chris, do you want to uh touch base on?
Yeah, sure. Just on the post office. Um, I've certainly point well taken. It is a shabby looking building right now. Um, I would say one of the challenges with that space is I believe pretty recently the town was actually trying to uh issue an RFP to sell that property. Um, so we we have leased with the post office there through twenty twenty seven, I want to say. Um, but beyond that, I don't think we really want to retain that building or town use if possible. Um, so but I again, point well taken. We do need to figure out. You know what, at least in the short term, we need to do to make sure the building doesn't seriously deteriorate further. Um, but again, it's not a property that we have plans to maintain in the long term, given its shape.
You still want to spruce it up, even if you want to sell it in five years.
Yeah.
It needs windows. We know it needs a new heating system and.
That's more than just a spruce.
Well, the painting it needs to be done.
Well, that's different than the heat.
That really needs to be. So cement salt chip.
So this does tie into something I was going to talk about a little bit later in my report. Um, so you know, one thing we really need is just condition assessments for all of these facilities. So we know you have a checklist of things that need to be done. We have cost estimates and we can actually start chipping away at some of the backlog.
How many years did that that'll take us?
To do what?
To do just what you said.
To chip away at the backlog or to get.
An accurate assessment and get worked on almost.
Oh, I don't that not too long. So I'm meeting it actually with a firm EDM out of Pittsfield that does this kind of work on Friday. Um, and they'll, you know, they'll be here to take a quick look around at some of our buildings. We have to actually, you know, get a quote from them and it's a competitive process. Um, but I don't think it'll take long to actually get someone to do those condition assessments, whether or not the town can afford what's on the checklist.
Are you looking at this building as well?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's I mean, the roof in particular and.
The back door on that, it's all falling off the paint on the piece. The railings are horrible. It needs a little TLC.
Right.
That that's some big stuff on it, but the roof is a problem.
Because you're going to have that done by uh winter and we have that outside anyway.
To rehab that building? No, 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 no. I'm just talking about getting an actual list of all the things that we need to do with these town properties.
You see that uh post office building staying the way it is throughout the winter?
Uh, at this time, yeah, there there's no plans for painting or anything like that in terms of major rehab.
And you don't think you have to get painted before winter?
Well, you're looking at what's in this budgeted too right now.
Six weeks at least.
Yeah. Um, did you want to fill in on the bicentennial where we're at without?
Oh, you wait till later on in January.
Okay. Okay, thank you, George. We appreciate your time.
The other thing I was.
It's your time is pretty much up. Do you have one more quick thing?
Put it on the agenda next week.
Okay, there you go. Perfect. Um, all right. Next up, we've got department reports. Highway super come on down. How are you doing this week?
Yeah, I see you're gonna be giving your rope on your house.
Yes, finally. Yeah, tomorrow we'll see. Supposed to be today, but with the rain tomorrow.
Um, I've got an ornatory coming next Monday to do some work on the house with the view.
Okay.
They'll be there for a while. We back out for a week and along the Tuesday power.
Turning some trees right on that corner there?
On the whole corner, yeah.
Okay.
Depending how far you can get, then if you can get around to just to uh spirit.
Mm hmm.
I'll go back down around. See how far I can get.
Okay.
I canceled the project that was supposed to be happening this week, this week. With the weather.
Which project was that? That was?
Twenty percent barber and all that stuff. He just can't see.
I got a question. Are you are you doing Glasgow Road?
Yes.
You are. Well, you need to fix the road in front of the uh telephone office before you put anything on it because it's falling apart. I oh, I'm just asking if you know, that's all. Well, sometimes you said people don't tell you things, so I wish.
Yes. Since there's so much rain and so much over um.
Get it.
Cannony on so many roads, it doesn't dry out.
Yeah.
Down the road. Um, maybe on part of the first one in there, maybe maybe the only kind of weather I hope of it then it would be like seven.
Yeah, well, we don't have another wet winter summer around. Jesus, the worst summer I remember. Thank you, by the way. I appreciate it.
Uh, let's see here. Um, we doing quite a bit of work on heat.
Hmm.
Up there on the ditch on the both sides. On color pipe out there in front of driveway, you never knew was one there.
Okay.
So uh maybe we push the check dams all the way down, sort of going around, not rub by the one log area. Get involved, aim it up, I think. Hopefully make it at least flow a little bit better up there. Um, I spoke to the DDP rep. About about an hour. And hopefully I can get in come on next week and meet with the two contractors, you know, over in the tail scope of work. I want to have some done and be covered.
Okay.
Still haven't heard anything yet from the funding from from them yet. It'll get it'll get the hell out of there when it happens. I haven't heard any anymore on Russell State yet for down the street down here. I know the uh pipe was broke fixed.
Mm hmm.
A little pinball in it. I went and tested it the other day, probably Thursday or Friday for our incoming.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I found out that uh I I I. Bump line. So.
Okay.
We'll go separate way.
So, okay, so there's we're still debating whether it's a groundwater or not.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have.
Okay.
Our demand around here, you know, trying to get things fixed, just to have somebody come out to get take a look at something. At ease equipment, almost a thousand dollars.
Crazy.
Yep. Yeah, it ain't getting any cheaper. He had come on, he come on and looked at our J C B and grabbed walking it. Eight hundred ninety nine dollars. Let's look at. Come on.
Where'd they come from? China?
There are no dollars around here.
No, I. I'm sure.
I was going to get a deal for our quality free service. Uh, we don't do that past we do engines. Okay, well, we don't do budget. Okay.
Uh, Mary, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I just wanted to let you know that um it should be on the website. The town clerk's office is going to be closed Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for the town clerk conference.
Okay. Thank you.
I would. Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
All right, town administrator.
Great. So real quick, uh, just following up on something from last week about fire service group has been providing our testing of alarms and sprinklers. Uh, so they were here last week, so I got to chat with some of their technicians. Um, they're going to get us a copy of their general service agreements and we can see if we already signed one because this would have been chief mater. Um, so I'm going to find out what the story is there, but really what we want to just get a handle on is what is the regular uh, you know, maintenance that they're required to do or the testing that they're required to do under the NFPA? And then we can kind of budget a little more sanely for what they're doing. Um, the other aspect of this is I'm going to request from the finance committee a reserve fund transfer to handle a couple of the uh invoices from them. Um, they had an issue with the fire sprinkler system that necessitated they come in and Hoppy had to come in as well. And I think it ended up being like, you know, over a thousand dollars just for one day of showing up. Um, so there's there's a couple of items like that that I think it's appropriate to to ask the finance committee whether or not we can expend some of that reserve fund.
Okay.
Um, so I'll I'll speak with them at our next meeting with about that. Um, in terms of capital planning, I'd already kind of started to talk about it with uh with George, um, but I've I've reached out to a couple of companies about property condition assessments. Um, this is kind of backfill some gaps in our capital improvement plan. Um, so you know, we have on the one hand in our capital improvement plan, we have a list of all the requests from departments um and all the potential projects that could be grant funded. Um, what we have less of is obviously just, you know, what are the challenges with our brick and mortar facilities? Um, so the idea is to actually get a handle on that. Um, most of the companies I've seen out there, yeah, these kind of assessments can be done for under ten thousand dollars. Um, we'll have to talk about funding nonetheless.
Mm hmm.
Maybe our plan is available. Have to kind of take a look at that.
Um, and will they prioritize like what buildings would be and what um projects would be, you know, top priorities for us?
Yeah, I think that's a conversation we have to have. I mean, to me, uh, this building obviously is pretty high up on the list because it's just used for virtually everything.
Mm hmm.
Um, George has got a question.
My question, don't we have contractors in town who do the various repair work and so forth? They can come in and evaluate the buildings. Why do we have to spend ten thousand dollars to have somebody come in and do an assessment when we have contractors in town? They're confident to say what things cost and what it would cost to repair and fix up and so.
So this, these are, these are firms that work with facilities the size of a school building and they typically would work with a school district or a municipality. Um, so you you know, you may well have a point when it comes to a smaller building. Um, I think for something like the size of this, I I I would feel more comfortable with a firm that is experienced with those levels of munis- of facilities. Um, but if you got any names, shoot them my way.
The amount of buildings that you're taking into consideration for that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I mean, I, in my mind, that is more reason to hold on putting money into a building like the Old Town Hall that we're not planning on keeping if we've got all these other big projects that are more prior, you know.
Certainly, if you have anyone in mind, George, though, feel free to shoot me an email about it.
All right.
Okay.
Um, so that's uh I'll have more updates on that shortly. Um. Sorry, real quick, I just lost where I lost my notes. Um. Grants. Oh, yeah. Real quick update. Uh, so last week I met with our Commission on Disability on Wednesday. Um, they signed off on moving forward with this grant application. So we applied for a grant uh for signage, door hardware, uh and grab bars for our town facilities.
Mm hmm.
We'll see. Uh, the recommendation from the Mass Office on Disability was just submit as many projects as you can and we'll see what we can fund.
Yeah.
They fund huge things. They're up to a quarter million dollars and little things as well. So we went through the little stuff, but I'd say. Um, and then real quick, um. Adam updated me last week, so we actually did a we had a joint grant application with Huntington for some air bottles. Um, it's actually, it's great. They between ourselves and Huntington is a six hundred thousand dollars grant.
Crazy.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. Um, and there is a match, but we'd already planned for that at annual town meetings, so we have an appropriation for the six thousand dollar match.
Excellent work.
So.
That's awesome.
Yeah, well, that's all that's all out of.
Yeah, and that's something we've been worried about how we were going to budget yearly for those air packs. That's awesome.
Yeah. So good news there. Uh, and then real quick, um, so I I provided a copy to every one of our treasure collector RFP.
Mm hmm.
Um, so we'll see, we'll be opening bids um October second.
Okay.
Um, and that's a Monday, so I hope to be able to basically have a a contract to sign that that evening for everyone. Um, so we'll review that. And then real quick also, uh, with Dave, we we posted the highway labor positions that's out there. Certainly, if you know anyone, you know, point it towards our website. Uh, we've also got it posted on the bulletin board. Um, and we're putting it in the papers, trying to really get the word out here.
Okay. Great.
So that's that's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Question, Mary? Um, what about Nicole's?
Yes, that's an action.
An action I know for us. Question, George?
A question, uh, the Brazilian third road project. What where is that at the present time? When are the meetings being held and how often?
Yeah, yep. So uh, I provided a brief update to the board last week on this. Uh, so we're at the stage in the project where we're looking at beaver impacted roads. Um, currently, I'm working with PVPC and Dave to figure out um, you know, which property owners needed to be contacted other than Springfield Water, um, who may have these you know, beaver ponds on their properties that may be impacting our roads. Um, so the next step would be reaching out to the property owners. And then figuring out basically Fupson O'Neil is the consultant who's doing the work around the beavers would be visiting those properties, checking out what the impacts are, and then recommending some possible solutions. Um, obviously, a lot of that is contingent on the cooperation of those property owners. Um, so we'll see, but.
Are there public meetings where there's discussion about the information you gather?
Yeah, so we had those two public information sessions this spring. Uh, there are going to be a couple larger advisory committee meetings coming up. Uh, I don't have exact dates for that yet, so.
There aren't like monthly meetings where you assess what you've gathered and where things are.
There are, there are regular core team meetings, but they're not really, you know, they're not public meetings, so um, they're just, you know, myself, the other town administrators and the consultant staff. Um, but there are, as I said, larger advisory committee meetings, um, and at some point I anticipate there will be a kind of wrap up meeting um with the public.
Thank you. All right. Um, action item. So we have a um memorandum of agreement for Massachusetts with Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the Vulnerable Road User Program signage. Do you want to explain this? This is for the.
Yeah, I think I actually maybe brought this up in the spring and we just didn't have an actual copy of the memorandum yet. Now we do. Um, it's basically there's a new law in Massachusetts. If you're passing a bicyclist in your vehicle, you need to give them four feet of space.
Mm hmm.
Um, Dave and I were talking about it. He said, you know, there's lots of touring cyclists on a few of our roads. Might be nice to just get a few of these signs. Mast outs providing them at no cost. We do have to maintain the signs, obviously.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I think Dave's got some thoughts on where we can place them.
Okay.
Um, so to me, it's kind of a no brainer if we want to, you know, be a little bit more welcoming to that kind of traffic, so to speak.
And then, um, our police department would be enforcing any um other tickets for?
I, yeah, I would imagine so. I don't know too much about the new law beyond that it does require that four feet of space. Um. But I think it's, you know, to me, it's probably more functions as a, oh, by the way, there are cyclists on this road, just keep in mind kind of.
And any on Main Street would be the state.
Be mast out, yeah. So we were looking at Chester Road.
Yeah.
Russell Stage and North Blanford.
Okay. Yeah, good idea. Was that your question, Mary? Where?
Uh, I want to make sure the state is gonna do something on your twenty three because that's where most of the cyclists come up and then they'll go off either to Russell Road or Chester Road. And if you're doing the loop, they'll go all the way around.
Yeah, I I'm happy to reach out to Mast and find out, you know, how frequently they're planning on putting the signs up.
Yeah, if we can do it, they ought to do it.
Well, they the the question to me is where will they do it?
They put some up in Westfield already.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Look that way.
Yeah. Well, you know, if you fall up on the hill, they're probably confused.
Well, the the thing is, uh, you know, I I got awful tired of seeing, you know, look out for this, look out for that, look out for, you know, and you you see the bicycle lanes they have down in Westfield and Springfield and Hoyt and that. You don't see any bike riders on them. They're because they know if they're on it, they're in the middle of traffic. All right, you you watch where the bike lanes are. Now, out here, there's some of our roads that they ride on, like even Chester Road. Uh, you go past Martin's, you go down that hill. Well, from some point in Martin's Field, you can't see what's on the other side of that hill. You got a bike rider. He he the car moves over four feet. You got a head on collision happening. So I think we got to be a little careful on, you know, the because somebody's going to get hurt. Eventually, somebody's going to get hurt and it the state don't care because they're more interested in paying somebody to make signs.
I think, Dave, is that part of what you're taking into consideration when with the placement of the signage?
Yeah, um. They'll be put in places where it's you don't have a bunch of uh street light sight.
Okay.
And like like you said, around the corner, um, going down, going downhill at your house.
Yeah.
Both in that corner going towards Sanders Road down through there. And we could put a couple of that.
Prime issue, you take eight feet out of the road there, you haven't got a lot of road left.
No, you don't.
Foreign site. That's and that's what you're talking about more.
Yeah. So so to be clear, this isn't a bike lane. I was just telling you, you got it.
Right, right.
Right.
Well, the law says. People drive, they don't know what four feet is.
If we have, if we have more of a center of account with with sidewalks and all that stuff or there was a broader man that offered a call on Fleet Streets. And when I first started working, we did it one and was one of the first ones in the state. We did it all over the Hinsdale. That was the side streets that had always connectors. And they all bought brand new sidewalks and granite curb. I mean, it was beautiful. But you're losing. People are losing yards.
Well, it's bad enough with way they got the road cut in the middle with those speed bumps. If you try to pass with a motorcycle on that, it actually almost wants to throw you sideways. They've taken three feet out of the road with those, so they just keep narrowing everything. Not that I'm against the law, it's just it's a tough one.
So I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with uh Mass D O T for Vulnerable Road Usage Program signage. So you can get the signs put up. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I. Um, so now I'll make a motion that we can talk um motion to approve the designation of library director as special municipal um employee. So go ahead, Mary.
Well, I guess you better make your motion before.
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. I don't think it's necessary that she be made a special employee.
I don't.
But all all is disclosure notice. She has to let the town know that she is
Yeah.
An elected official as well as being compensated for the
The school.
Library.
Yeah.
And there's no compensation for the school community.
No, there's no harm in making someone a special town employee though.
No, but once you do it, it's in perpetuity. It stays it. Library trustees are special employees because I was working at the college at the university. And I was also working for the town and I was also in a non compensated elected position at that time. It was.
But there's no harm in it. I mean, we're all basically.
Harm, yeah.
Um, so I mean, I don't have any problem with that. I know she so Nicole just wanted to um she reached out to the state.
Yeah.
Ethics and did what she needed to do, so.
One one question. Uh, it says here, I receive bi- bi weekly paycheck from the town of Blanford and working full time as the library director and at the Ford Memorial Drive Way in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars. She gets thirteen hundred dollars every two weeks.
That I that's what she's saying.
But that's not.
And it's full time. She doesn't work full time.
It's not full time.
That's what I'm saying. Is that that's typo?
Is that typo or is she getting thirteen hundred dollars every other week?
I so there's a little bit ambiguity about the phrase full time, right? Because I I believe probably when Nicole meant there, she works more than twenty hours, so she is a benefited employee. Not that she works thirty five or forty hours a week.
Right.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, that if that's her salary is.
That's that's her salary. So she gets every month she gets twenty six hundred bucks from town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, you have a question or?
Well, no, I just thought that, you know, I thought that was a lot of money.
She does a lot of work.
Try to live on it.
Yeah, and she has two master's degrees. Yeah, see, she does.
No, I was just concerned about the wording of full time if it puts in conflict.
I I.
You know what I'm saying?
No.
You know how things can be.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be.
You know, it's just like it's like what this summit there. I put a lot of hours in.
Yeah.
You know, and because that's what it takes. And I understand that. I just wanted to make it clear because, you know, someone sees this and they're going to say, oh, my God. We don't see her that often. What's going on? You know, and it's all the behind the scenes where it's. We don't see her that often, what's going on, you know, and it's all the behind the scenes where it's.
Well, I mean, anyone can take a look at the budgets.
Yeah, so I didn't know if this went to the state, that's why I was at with the ethics thing. Then we'll never see daylight again.
Unless somebody asks.
Right, well, I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't put ourselves in arms away with it, that's what my concern is.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Simple.
All right, unfinished, bicentennial, will we bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, sure, um, so after George came by last week, uh, we reached out to, uh, Kristen, who is from Taking Roots. And take care of the flower beds there prior to the end of the fiscal year and has also been working up in Watson Park on those flower beds. Um, she's not available this week for dress it, uh, she's out of town, but when she gets back next week, she's gonna take a look and see if there's. You know, some supplemental work she could do for the town, uh, to bring things up to snuff, I'm also reaching out to one of our local landscapers. Um, to see if they can take care of some of the weeds and, and some of the tree trimming that you mentioned, so. Hopefully, we'll have some kind of solution in place in the interim, um. You know, long-term, I did reach out to, uh, Bartholomew Management, who takes care of all of our trusts. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with them either at the end of this month or middle of next month. There's a few different things floating around that are potential options for making, restoring that trust.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna be speaking with Sarah and them, uh, and I'll have more updates on that front as well.
Is there a contract to maintain bicentennial park? Or is it, or is it, well, maybe I'll do something tomorrow or next week.
No, so we had, we, we, we had a, we had a contract for FY twenty-three that included work in Watson Park and bicentennial. By Taking Roots, um.
So, has any, has any invoices been put in for work done in Watson Park?
In Watson Park?
I mean, I'm sorry.
No.
Anybody admitted?
No, there's no.
I've worked X number hours.
No, no.
I processed the bills, no, nothing has come through.
No, I think, George, it's just, it's a challenging situation because again, that trust is pretty much depleted, um, and. We're, everyone's a little bit hesitant to take something and put it on the operating budget when, of course, the town accepted it with the, with the belief that that wouldn't happen. So, that, that's the context.
Of course, it was in seventy-six is when they hit it, so it's a long time ago, you were a kid then.
Yeah.
Ten years ago, there wasn't a set front of the park done, and one of the things that was. Done was they had an arborist in, cause I was here the day the death of place, and the arborist was from UMass. And he strongly suggested at that time. That that tree be selectively pruned, not just butchered by somebody who has a chainsaw.
Well, that, yeah, we're not saying to butcher, we're looking for.
Selective with prune, so that it grows back and in a proper shape and, and condition. And my concern is that whoever you hire to maintain that park, if they do it right. That they don't, you don't hire, uh, somebody who doesn't know what they're doing, to come in and end up butchering, whether it's the plants or the. The things that are, uh, uh, there now or the tree.
Well, I can tell you, being familiar with Kristen's work up in Watson, she's not gonna butcher the flower beds. Now, if you're concerned about the tree, um, you know, obviously, we'll try to be careful about who we select to take care of that, but maybe that's an issue that waits until. You know, next spring when we're talking about budget, when we have maybe some greater clarity on the trust situation, um, then we can talk about it then.
If you're trying to have work done on a tree, you do it in late fall.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, you don't put it off the next spring, cause that is putting out.
But if the money's not there, you do it.
Georgia paid for it.
You know?
Well, that's the question, I mean, if we can afford ten thou- that, what, a thousand dollars, that's on bank, a month, a piece of equipment, we should be able to afford. So a few hundred bucks to have a tree done.
It's very, yeah, okay, um.
So what's the plan?
We have a plan, George, and I think we read it, I'm sorry, I'm.
So, so as I just mentioned, so I reached out to Kristen about the flower beds and I've reached out to one of our local landscapers about some of the other work there. Um, with respect to the trees, um, I can reach out to our tree warden, see if he has any recommendations.
I think Kristen too will probably have some ideas on the tree, and then if she, um, if it's not something that is in her wheelhouse. Then we can, um, ask her to point us in the direction of someone.
And UMass was a big help back in the day, when we had guys.
Well, it sounds like, I, it sounds like Christopher has a pretty solid plan, so I am, have faith that. That will move forward as does everything else, he does. Question, Mary?
Yeah, um, when, when did, did, was it Lynn Kane who put our trust funds into this? Is it Bartholomew?
No, that was, that was a project under Sarah, yeah.
It was, okay, so she put them in, uh, one of the banks down Westfield, so. Do you have the original document for what Winifred left the town?
Yep, yep, there's a, there's, uh.
Is it restricted? I guess that's the bottom line, is it, was it restricted?
Uh, I, I believe so, I would have to.
So you can dip into the principal? Cause it's only ten thousand.
I don't think we want.
I believe it was fifteen, Mary.
Fifteen.
But I could be wrong, but, yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah.
But in the, last year we had four thousand and something in it, and then this spring we asked. Yeah, and then he said there was more, there was sixty-two hundred in March or something.
Okay, so was that the earnings?
Earnings, yes, yeah.
So the fifteen thousand, we'll get it.
Uh, from my understanding, yes, but I'm.
Yeah, but I don't.
I think.
No, you can't.
So that's what Christopher said, he has a meeting coming up and he's gonna work with that. Okay, you're, um, Chester Road Hazard Trees.
Yeah, so, uh, TJ brought this up last week, um, sounds like we've got some trees against the road.
Very dead ones.
Yeah, um, and Dave, maybe you'll have some insight on this, I've reached out to Mark, I haven't heard anything back yet. Um, I, I was curious if there was any kind of protocol there between you and Mark, um.
I've called.
Yeah.
Never, no answer.
Yes.
Maybe we should be looking at a new tree warden.
Well, it's an elected position, so, no.
Just for the record, I called the tree warden seventy-two times.
All right.
Over a three-month period. That trees, and, uh, he didn't respond to any of my calls.
I think. Okay, uh, new business, all, all looks finished report, always a fan favorite. All right, go back. You said North Plank, you know, Chester. Okay. I keep reading, this is not a touchscreen. Was that, I, I'm not sure which email that got sent to, I guess you need to. But where, what's our, where's our cheat sheet?
Right. It was, was right here, somebody.
Be moving my cheat.
Should be coming up right around twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Oh, God, what's here?
Who threw it out? That is not okay. It's like removing my times tables.
It's not near anywhere. Somebody tossed it.
Mark, here we go, all the. So I'm looking at the one that was sent, yeah, this is sent today, okay, so twenty-five percent, let's see. Ooh, town hall maintenance and repairs, you already know about that one, though.
Yeah, so that's, the, most of that is fire service group, so a lot of that'll be dealt with through.
And then the external IT, we, I say every time, you say.
Yeah, yeah, so this is always, we pay thirty thousand dollars upfront for the finance software.
Okay.
I know, it's a lot, I'm, I'm meeting with our finance team on Wednesday, we're talking about a grant to get a new pro- a new software in there.
And we've paid about a third of the Hilltown. That's, looks right, it's at thirty percent.
Yep.
You know about highway overtime, Dave, where it's at, but you're coming into, but, uh, I was gonna say fire and ice. So nice.
Get ready to shit the work reason.
Okay. Equipment rental. Oh, yeah, cemetery. Killing your budget over there, huh?
That's where I'm huge, we're, we're fault, where we're supposed to be.
All right.
I don't see anything here on the, uh, tree ward.
On the line items?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's there, it's there, it's under, sorry about the back-to-back printing, it's more complicated.
We have page number.
It's where, you found it?
Yeah.
On page four, isn't it? Yeah.
On bottom.
All right.
So according to this, they, they bound to a hundred percent of their.
No, that was from the, um. Incumbrances for the four thousand. And then the ash tree removal is the, um, special town meeting, but then annual town meeting, it gets moved in. So it all balances out here. It gets moved in, and it was annual town meeting, special town meeting, and then that's the encumbrance from the ash tree or from the, um. Yeah, from last year.
So they still have what, eighteen thousand?
They're still, yeah, it looks, they've actually expended nothing out of.
So no work's been done. This is what you're telling me.
Unless just no, um.
Are you talking about the tree?
Yeah, the ash trees.
Or he hasn't turned anything in, he's kind of famous for work being done and then coming several months later and bringing in invoices, so that could be true. Maybe, maybe not several months, sorry, many weeks later.
So, yeah, I just reached out to, we'll, um, Christopher, Christopher and I will touch bases. Okay, um, any other new business, I think we're good. All right, meeting adjourned, twenty-seven forty-ish.
You made a motion?
About six forty-ish. Six forty-ish, ooh, I'm worse than my hip creators. It's been a long day.
One of them.
Kind of right to extend the day and then.
So could we have a motion there?
You don't need to. I said, cause I said so, sir.
I see the frustration in your girl.
No.
What's wrong with him?
They are lucky ducks.
Oh, Mary, I'm sorry, I didn't, you see your.